Welcome to the Shangri-La Dialogue Special Simultaneous Session. My name is Rahul Roy Choudhury. I am the Senior Fellow for South Asia at the IIIS, based in London. The title of the session is “Mechanisms for Enhancing Maritime Security.” Many of the Indo-Pacific region’s major security challenges are either essentially maritime in nature or involve important maritime dimensions. In the South China Sea, for example, China’s ambitious program to construct artificial islands and build military infrastructure on them has concerned not only some Southeast Asian states, but also those major powers that value freedom of navigation in regional waters. There are also concerns over interstate maritime tensions in the East China Sea and potentially in the Indian Ocean. The seriousness with which Asian states view challenges to the maritime security interests is reflected in the commitment of substantial resources across the region to naval modernization programs. The focus in this session will be on the potential of bilateral and regional naval cooperation, as well as specific measures such as the Proposed Code of Conduct in the South China Sea and the Code for Unplanned Encounters at Sea. In this respect, we heard earlier today the U.S. Acting Secretary of Defense Patrick Shanahan refer to the importance of maritime domain awareness, presumably in terms of information sharing, and this is an issue I will come back to later in the session. To help us provide useful and policy-relevant recommendations to manage regional maritime tensions and minimize the risk of conflict at sea, we have an impressive panel today of senior officials and practitioners who can think strategically from Vietnam, Singapore, the People’s Republic of China, and the United Kingdom. The format for this session will be for each of the speakers to provide brief introductory remarks of not more than five minutes each, followed by a discussion session, when the speakers will have additional time to respond to questions or provide details on their remarks. The reason for this is that in addition to the panel, I can see around the table a wealth of experience and expertise on maritime security issues, and I am keen to take advantage of this expertise. Let me start with our speakers. Our first speaker is Major General Dank Kwang Min, the Director-General Institute for Defense Strategy, Ministry of National Defense, Vietnam. General Min completed his Master of Military Science at Vietnam’s Army Academy and holds a Doctorate in Military Science from Vietnam’s National Defense Academy. General Min. General Min, there will be a simultaneous translation, so if you go to Channel One on the system, you will hear this in English. General.
Dear Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I’m very pleased today to share some views and assessments regarding the ASEAN role in enhancing the maritime security, ladies and gentlemen. Enhancing maritime security is one of the top priority of countries in the region nowadays due to the complicated nature of maritime security. Maritime security requires effectiveness, practical cooperation among country, inside and outside of the regions, based on the two basic elements, which are trust and international law. Maritime security involves the interests of many countries. It is also governed by various rules and regulations of the international law. Therefore, strengthening maritime security in the region should be based on widely recognized international law and regulations, implementing self-restraint without taking unilateral action, imposing, or displaying power that might complicate the situation. We also promote trust and cooperation in order to strengthen maritime security. Maritime security in the region is not only for the interest of the coastal state, but also landlocked as country and country outside of region. Therefore, addressing the issue of maritime security in the region requires combination of multilateral and bilateral mechanism to ensure the interests of all each country. Issue related to two countries only will be resolved bilaterally, and issue related to more than two countries need to be addressed using multilateral mechanism. Currently in the region, ASEAN and multilateral security cooperation mechanism with ASEAN centrality, especially ASEAN Defend Minister beating ADM and ADM+ play an important role in security maintenance of the regions. This includes maritime security and stability. After nearly ten years since its establishment, ADM+ has proven to be an important and effective mechanism for dialogue. As well as defense security, security in Asia-Pacific, maritime security is one of the top priority of the agenda and one of the ADM+ seven areas of cooperation. Besides, maritime security is also integrated in other areas of cooperation such as counterterrorism, search and rescue, and humanitarian assistance at sea. In reality, ASEAN partner had largely promoted dialogue and cooperation to maintain peace, stability, and enhance maritime security in the region. Progress had been made in the negotiation of the Code of Conduct in Southeast Asia, or also known as ECOC, agree on the application of Code of Unplanned Encounter at Sea Qs and the guideline for air military encounter gain. ASEAN-China maritime exercise in 2018 and ASEAN-U.S. maritime exercise scheduled to be held in 2019, a positive result, contributing to the promoting dialogue, strengthening trust and confidence, foster pragmatic, sustainable cooperation, as well as contribute to the strengthening maritime security of the region, ladies and gentlemen. The history of the establishment and development of ASEAN that the Prime Minister of Singapore reiterated in his speech at the reception last night show a sad fact that Southeast Asia was one of the region of poverty and instability due to hostility, mutual, and deep difference between countries. Vietnam and other country in the Indo-China peninsula had experienced more brutal war, but thanks to the solidarity, determination to support each other, the people of three Indo-China country had attained the power to defeat enemy, win national independence and identification. While Cambodian people are at risk of genocide due to the brutal and regime of the Khmer Rouge, Vietnam timely and impartial support had helped Cambodian people to escape the threat of genocide. It had revitalized Cambodia from dead field to become a peaceful and growing country as it is today. That fact once again prove that there are no difficulty and challenges that we are not, you cannot overcome. If there is a solidarity, trust, mutual assistance among the nation, we can work together with mutual development, peace, stability at the same time. It proved the just spirit and the great international solidarity of Vietnamese volunteer to help Cambodian escape genocide. Nowadays, ASEAN is cohesive and growing community. The history lesson that Singapore’s Prime Minister has reaffirmed that unity, independence, self-reliance, knowledge, and trust to each other will be the source of strength, as well as the best interest of each nation and ASEAN community as a whole in the context of the fluctuation dynamics nowadays. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, General. Let me now turn to our next speaker, Rear Admiral Allen Go, the Group Chief Policy and Strategy of the Ministry of Defense of Singapore. Admiral Go previously commanded the Maritime Security Task Force of the Republic of Singapore Navy. He studied mathematics at Cambridge University in the UK and attended the Naval Staff Course of the U.S. Naval War College. Admiral Go.
Thank you. Distinguished guests, fellow panelists, good afternoon. Thank you for taking the time to attend this session and to the IIIS for the opportunity to share my views. I believe we are all here because we recognize that the sea is important to all of us. Singapore recognizes this especially. It’s a small state with no natural resources. Our sea lines of communications provide for ninety-nine percent of our energy and ninety percent of our food. Safe access to these seas have been vital to us, and Singapore is not alone. After all, the Asia-Pacific is home to some of the largest ports and busiest seas in the world. However, the continuance of regional economic prosperity hinges upon the seas remaining open, safe, secure, and accessible to all. To ensure that, we need to address two key regional maritime security challenges. First, there are maritime territorial disputes. We have seen aggressive actions and points of heightened tensions between states in the South China Sea. A miscalculation there could negatively affect trade on the sea lines of communications. Second, the old scourge of piracy and the threat of maritime terrorism. These non-conventional security threats continue to target innocent vessels, making our seas less safe. The future, however, is not bleak, and it is possible to take practical steps to build trust and confidence to overcome these challenges. There are established international laws which set out a rules-based order to guide countries’ actions at sea. All countries should respect these established laws and adhere to a common, a set of common rules, and thus build mutual trust and confidence. The access to seabound trade routes is an interest common to many countries in the Asia-Pacific and not the sole purview of any single state. Thus, the seas must be kept open and inclusive for all countries, big and small. Should countries have differences, we should exercise restraint and prevent destabilizing the region for the benefit of all. To achieve this, we need to respect established international laws and practices that undergird freedom of navigation and seek peaceful ways to resolve differences. Besides rules and laws, we should invest in practical confidence-building measures and increase mutual understanding between countries. General Min has said it just now, the ASEAN-China maritime exercise in October last year and the upcoming ASEAN-U.S. maritime exercise are good examples of regional countries collaborating to establish working-level confidence between navies. Measures like the Code of Unplanned Encounters at Sea, Qs, also mentioned by General Min, help build confidence and are worth our continued investments. Notably, Qs was recently practiced on the twenty-fourth of April and helped maintain peaceful transit during an unscheduled encounter between a Philippine vessel and a Taiwanese vessel in a region contested by both states. These efforts have reduced the chance of accidents and miscalculation at sea. There are also positive signs for regional cooperation in areas of mutual interest. These efforts have borne success, and it is worth investing more efforts to build greater professional linkages between navies. For example, our region has a strong track record of cooperation to meet the common challenges of piracy and maritime terrorism. Since 2004, Indonesia, Malaysia, Thailand, and Singapore have been successful in combating piracy and sea robberies in the Straits of Malacca and Singapore through the jointly conducted Malacca Straits patrols. And as we speak now, there are ongoing efforts by Indonesia, Malaysia, and the Philippines under the Trilateral Cooperation Agreement to combat maritime terrorism in the Sulu and Sibis Seas. Singapore also recognizes that cooperation in information sharing to combat piracy and maritime terrorism has been very useful for regional countries. We have invested in the Information Fusion Center in Changi, which was under my previous command, and that center has just celebrated its ten anniversary last month at Index Asia 2019. The IFC has made many notable contributions to maritime security since its inception. It has built linkages to develop, to deliver actionable information with operation centers from over forty countries, and we have had a total of hundred-and-fifty-four liaison officers from twenty-four countries deployed at the IFC since 2009. Today, there are nineteen liaison officers accredited to the IFC from eighteen different countries: Australia, Brunei, Cambodia, Canada, China, France, India, Indonesia, Malaysia, Myanmar, New Zealand, Peru, Philippines, South Korea, Thailand, the UK, the U.S., and Vietnam. Practical measures I’ve highlighted have proven to be concrete ways for navies to build trust and confidence, which are fundamental to maritime security and stability. I look forward to hearing further insights from my esteemed fellow panel members and to our discussion later. Thank you.
Thank you, Admiral. Our third speaker is Senior Colonel Joe Bo, Director of Security Cooperation Center, Office for International Military Cooperation, Ministry of National Defense, People’s Republic of China. Colonel Joe Bo is responsible for multilateral cooperation, including peacekeeping, counterpiracy, counterterrorism, and forums and workshops in the Asia-Pacific. He is also an alumni of Cambridge University and was a visiting fellow at the Land Warfare Studies Center of the Australian Army. I had the privilege of chairing Colonel Joe Bo’s session on India-China relations at last year’s Shangri-La Dialogue.
Thank you, Rahul. I sometimes consider my life a big joke, and that is because, as an Air Force officer, I have been taking care of China’s efforts in Counterparasiting Gulf of Aden for nearly five years, and this is my second time to speak at a Shangri-La Dialogue about maritime issue being an Air Force officer. Life is ironic sometimes, but this is life. Ninety percent of global trade is maritime trade. Therefore, maritime security is of vital importance to all countries. As the world’s largest trading and exporting nation, China attaches great importance to maritime security. China’s initiative to jointly build the Twenty-First Century Maritime Silk Road is aimed at promoting maritime connectivity and practical cooperation in various fields, as well as promoting common security through economic development. At present, there are no major threats to global maritime security, but a non-traditional threat such as piracy, maritime terrorism, trafficking human being and drugs, and natural disasters still exist. In the Asia-Pacific region, the overall maritime situation is stable. However, some countries outside the region, in disregard of the concerns of coastal countries, persist in military activities at sea and in the air, such as high-intensity and large-scale closing reconnaissance. Differences in the interpretation of international law by states and in domestic law increase the risk of accidents and conflicts. The situation in the South China Sea is polarized. On the one hand, with the smooth progress of the negotiations on the Code of Conduct in the South China Sea between China and ASEAN countries, the situation in the South China Sea has calmed down significantly. On the other hand, some countries outside the South China Sea have obviously violated the commitments of not taking a position on the South China Sea issue and have openly increased involvement in the South China Sea, thus making the factors of instability in the South China Sea more complicated. The Chinese Armed Forces are committed to working with Armed Forces of other countries to safeguard maritime security. China has established direct Defense Department telephonic links with the United States, Russia, the Republic of R.K., Vietnam, and other countries, and has held extensive dialogues and consultations with the relevant countries on maritime security. China and the United States established the Military Maritime Consultation Agreement in 1998. After ten years of negotiation, the Chinese and Japanese Defense Department signed the Maritime and Air Liaison Mechanism in 2018. In accordance with Agreement of Basic Principles for the Settlement of Maritime Issues Between China and Vietnam, the two sides have so far conducted twenty-five rounds of joint patrols in the Beibu Gulf. The Chinese military has actively participated in the ASEAN Regional Forum and all maritime security cooperation under the ADM+ framework. China has repeatedly expressed its willingness to discuss with ASEAN the establishment of a China-ASEAN Defense Direct Telephone Link. China and ASEAN countries have reached a single consultation draft on the Code of Conduct in South China Sea, and the consultations are progressing smoothly, as the Vietnamese general has just pointed out. So, how can we possibly eliminate the security risks and promote maritime security? We believe that, first, reduce and avoid closed military activities that are viewed by the other side as unfriendly or even hostile. This is the most direct and effective way to avoid conflict at sea. There are quite a few established mechanisms at sea, such as Convention on the International Regulation for Preventing Collision at Sea, Code of Conduct for Unplanned Encounter at Sea, the Rule of Behavior for Safety of Maritime and Air Encounters Between the Chinese and American Militaries, and the Chinese-Japan Maritime and Air Liaison Mechanism. It should be noted that most of the existing rules are arrangements for accidental encounters, but tactical arrangements work best when both sides have a strategic consensus that they do not conflict and do not confront each other, and if one side deliberately provokes other, it is difficult for the other side not to react. Second, we should encourage Asia-Pacific countries to conduct dialogue and drills on avoiding dangerous military activities at sea and in the air. So far, China has established defense consultation and dialogue mechanism with forty-two countries and international organizations around the world, out of which a considerable number of them include the discussion of maritime security issue. China has conducted joint naval exercises with many countries. Last year, China and ASEAN held a joint naval exercise in Zhanjiang, China, for the first time. This year, China also held a joint naval exercise with some Southeast Asian countries in Qingdao, China. These naval exercises can enable officers and men on the first front to follow good seamanship, reduce the risk of miscalculations, increase understanding, and cultivate the habit of cooperation. The Chinese side hopes that such joint military exercises will continue in the future. Third, China, this is what I want to stress. China and the United States should cooperate rather than confront each other on freedom of navigation. Neither China nor the United States wants a conflict at sea, and both agree on the principle of freedom of navigation, but the two sides have different understanding of its content and scope of application. As early as in eighteen, as early as in 1998, China clearly stated in the Law of the People’s Republic of China on the Exclusive Economic Zone and the Continental Shelf that all states shall enjoy the freedom of navigation and overflight in the Exclusive Economic Zone of China on the premise of respecting international law and laws and regulations of the People’s Republic of China. Freedom of navigation in the South China Sea has never been an issue. Therefore, although China and the United States have differences in the understanding of freedom of navigation, they should seek a common ground while shelving differences. One side should not impose its own unilateral interpretation on the other side and even send military vessels and aircraft to conduct dangerous military activities in the other side’s territorial waters and exclusive economic zones on the pretext of freedom of navigation. Such activities infringe upon the sovereignty and security of other states and also endanger the safety of American ships and aircraft. As major powers, China and the United States bear special responsibility for global security. China and the United States have jointly participated in the counterparasiting operation in the Gulf of Aden, as mentioned by Secretary of Defense Shanahan this morning. This could be taken as maintaining the security of the strategic sea lanes, but also as safeguarding the freedom of navigation. So this is what I want to say. Counterparasiting itself could be read, could be read in three folds. Number one, counterpiracy. Number two, safeguarding international sea lane. Number three, safeguarding freedom of navigation. As long as the two sides do not sacrifice each other’s security, China and the United States can cooperate in safeguarding the freedom of global navigation and provide more public security goods in maritime commons. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me now turn to the last speaker for this session, Admiral Tim Fraser, who is the Vice-Chief of Defense Staff of the UK. Admiral Fraser was captain of the aircraft carrier HMS Illustrious, commander, UK maritime component, Persian Gulf, and senior British advisor to the U.S. Central Command. Admiral.
Well, thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. It’s a privilege to have the opportunity to make a few introductory remarks, remarks to this session, and to be in Singapore for my first Shangri-La Dialogue, two and a half weeks into the job as UK’s Vice-Chief of Defense Staff. So, thank you. Before I set out UK perspective on the maritime security challenge in the region, I want to start by recognizing the wealth of regional expertise we have in the room here and build on Rahul’s point that that should lead to a very good conversation in the remainder of the period, and I’m keen to hear what is to be said. The UK sees a region as a region of tremendous opportunity, but also facing numerous security challenges, which I think have been clearly outlined in the dialogue over the last sort of twenty-four hours. In the maritime domain, we see proliferation of non-traditional threats as well, including those from piracy, drug trafficking, illegal and unregulated fishing. But we know these threats are interlinked, leading to drivers of piracy and to fueling serious organized crime and terrorism. And alongside these non-traditional threats, preserving the freedom of navigation and the freedom, freedom of access to the global commons cannot be taken for granted. This is all, this is important in this region, where three trillion dollars of cargo moves through the South China Sea, as it is in the Indian Ocean, the Atlantic, or in other strategic choke points. So upholding the rules-based order that has done so much for global peace and stability is a common thread that runs through all UK maritime security work. Taking the broad and deep security challenges I have described, and has been very clear from the dialogue so far, depends first and foremost on better information sharing. And we’ve heard from the other speakers this afternoon of numerous arrangements, bilateral and multilateral, that can lead to that. We’ve enjoyed nearly fifty years, the Five Powers Defense Arrangement, which reaches its fiftieth, fiftieth year in 2021, and participation in the enforcement of UN sanctions. But understanding the threats we face is not enough, and we also need to be willing and prepared to respond. For the UK part, this, this means to be present, and over the last twelve months, we’ve had near continuous presence at sea with the deployments of our ships, Sutherland, Albion, Argyle, and Montrose, alongside our existing FPD, FPDA naval facilities here in Singapore, is proof of our determination to do this. But as has already highlighted by the other speakers, we also need effective mechanisms for coordinating our activity. So the sum of that activity adds up to more than just the sum of its parts, and builds on that precious commodity of trust, which, again, was highlighted in the speakers we’ve heard this morning. And we can also learn from other areas within the region, within the region, efforts of Indonesia, Malaysia, and Philippines to coordinate their respective maritime patrols, the UN enforcement arrangements that we’ve seen, I’ve already alluded to, but also from other areas, and my experience from combined maritime forces in the Middle East, which drew together thirty-three countries from a diverse collection of navies, many who are represented here at this event, united with common aims and objectives, and extending beyond the limits of other formal alliances. So the success of these initiatives points to a fundamental truth. If our efforts to combat some of the growing maritime security threats we face are to make a real difference, then the efficiency and the effectiveness of everything we do must be our first consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, we had four excellent presentations, diverse perspectives, and we have just over an hour for the discussion session. So let me begin the session by asking all four speakers one specific question, and this question is this. Earlier today, we heard the Acting U.S. Secretary of Defense Patrick Shanahan talk about maritime domain awareness in response to a question put to him, and clearly a sense that maybe there could be aspects of cooperation, regional cooperation, in terms of maritime domain awareness. I want to ask each member of the panel whether they think that, whether it is a good idea or not. If so, how best to operationalize it? And if it isn’t a good idea, then what could an alternative idea be in this respect? Let me start from the end, and then we sort of reverse order, and go to Admiral Tim Fraser first, and then we continue along this way.
Thanks, Rahul. Well, I think from what I said in my opening remarks, I believe that we do need to have mechanisms to, to seek maritime domain awareness. I think it’s been picked up this afternoon that that includes information sharing, so we can be as efficient and as effective as possible in the actions that we take. I think picking up on the Colonel’s point about miscalculation or misunderstanding, a better dialogue and a better sharing of information should lead to that. But I also think that it’s a big area, and there are different challenges. But I also think that it's a big area, and there are different challenges which might need, that means that one organization or one arrangement probably won't be the answer, and it will need several, and we've heard of several already during it. So how do we make that as efficient as possible? And also, to be frank, we need to get into the level of detail to make sure that we fully understand each other's position and we solve some of those difficult interpretation issues.
Thank you, Rahul, and I would really echo with Admiral Fraser's comment that the key point is detail, because the Secretary of Defense has yet to specify as to what he's referring to in terms of the locations and in terms of the problems. As I said earlier, at the sea, there aren't major threats. For example, why do we have more than twenty navies combating piracy in the Gulf of Aden? Because there aren't many serious issues, so there are no big threats around the world. And we are not short of institutions that can monitor the situation at sea. We can have IMO, we have IMB, and in Singapore, we have two, RICAP, Information Fusion Center. Both Admiral and I have been involved in counter piracy, and we know in EU Atlanta, they have a twenty-four-hour monitoring system, both in Northwood and also encoded mercury system, which is shared by all the international navies. So we'd need to know what specific situations require, what kind of new institutions for this kind of maritime domain awareness. Thank you.
Well, maritime domain awareness can be a term that means different things to different people. If I just address elephant in the room, if it's meant to monitor other people's shipping, then we can run into problems. So I mentioned about the IFC in my remarks. We took a bit of time to get it going ten years ago, because people had that little bit of suspicion, what's this about? But when we basically put it out that there's enough maritime security challenges in our region, piracy, illegal fishing, et cetera, people came on board, and when the center had a few quick successes that actually meant encountered, you could see that more countries sent full-time liaison officers. The best example, the recent one before I hand over command, I would say this, there was someone picked up at sea, and I can't remember the nationality, I believe he was Cambodian. The ship that picked him up was a merchant vessel, he called IFC, and because we had a Cambodian liaison officer, he could speak with that individual where the people of the ship couldn't. And long story short, the ship came through Singapore, the Cambodian embassy managed to take him and send him home. So this is an example of what working together in, is it maritime domain awareness? I think so, can bring about. And it always amazes people, we quietly say it, but the center, I read out the nineteen countries, the US and China represented, along with many others. The people that are sent here, they leave politics out of it, and they're all geared to work together on areas that can help one another.
Firstly, I also concur with the opinion share of Mr. Goh, and also from the moderators. From the point of view of Vietnam, the maritime security has to create a state that is considered safe, there is no threat that come from the sea and the related land. That will foster the regular activities for all countries. And I also, I would like to reiterate one thing that you mentioned. So differences from the point of view and the understanding of each country and each region regarding the rule of international law. That means that there might be some overlapping or conflict, then we have to sit down together and discuss. But in area, that many countries is related and overlapping, then all countries had to sit down and take speak of each country mind. And we have to find a solution that will hit all, that will reach a consensus among all nation. And also in my speech, I mentioned that unity and consider consolidation, and also that you have to have an understanding to each other, because only through negotiation and discussion, you can have an understanding and reaching agreement and consensus. And the stability, we creating safety zone for activities to be conducted at sea of all members of those state-related and forces, and authority at sea, they also can assist with it. So the most important thing, I think that what most important that Acting Secretary Shanahan, that it's stated that we have to find way to further enhance maritime security. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, if you'd like to ask a question or make a comment, please raise your hand and catch my eye, and then if you could also identify yourself before asking a question or making a comment. So let me sort of, yes, to that side, the lady first, and then we'll go to the next two speakers, and then you will come back.
Thank you very much. I'm quite honored or a bit scared to ask the first question to this panel. I've actually got two questions, and they're all addressed to the panel. The first being that I think that this region has done a tremendously good job in pursuing collaborative efforts and tackling illicit activities such as smuggling, trafficking, and maritime terrorism. However, most of these initiatives have mostly focused on monitoring and addressing unregulated movement in the sea. As we all know, maritime security is always a development on land. Do you think that there are other initiatives that can be pursued, which include cooperating with other maritime law enforcement agencies, which can effectively tackle the root causes of these activities? Which brings me very quickly to my second question. Do you think that there is a role for other enforcement agencies such as coastguards in contributing to the regional maritime security landscape? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. If I could go to, yes.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the panel for the very concise and interesting presentation. Colin Cole from our side, I want to ask two questions. The first question is addressed to the whole panel. I mean, there is no lack of, you know, the mention about information sharing, and I think based on that, we have seen a proliferation of such initiatives. Besides, IFC, we have seen recently in India, there is a setting up of the IFC Iowa, and now there is also plans to set up IFC equivalent in the Pacific. So are there any plans to try to sort of bring or harmonize these different centers together to promote this awareness, as well as to prevent any duplication, overlaps, and all that? Then the second question is specifically addressed to Admiral Goh. I think there's something that I thought was very interesting, is the one other big elephant in the room is the ongoing submarine proliferation. If you recall, twenty fifteen, Singapore proposed to have an underwater queues, and we also introduced the submarine safety information portal. I just, we want to get a sensing from you as to the reception so far that we have gotten from the region when it comes to these initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Suprianto from Australian National University. Looking at the disputes in the South and East China Seas, we can see that the spike intentions are often triggered not by military vessels, but by coastguard and other civilian maritime vessels. So there was an idea of introducing queues to be applied for coastguards. I would like to know your opinion, to what extent is queues relevant to dissuade tensions that were triggered by encounters between civilian maritime vessels? And if queues is not relevant, what are the mechanisms that can be put in place? Thank you.
Thank you. All very good questions. Let me come back to the panel, and let me start with Admiral Goh, since there were specific questions directed to him, and then the other members of panel can also respond, and then we come back for another round with others.
Yeah, Colin asked two questions. First one, info sharing, and IFC is popping out everywhere. Personally, I find it okay. Duplication in this aspect is not a problem. Duplication will only be a problem if you're wasting resources, but if they are located at different centers, looking at different geographies, overlaps actually help to make sure the picture is clearer. So that's my quick answer to the first part. The second part on underwater queues, yes, we did want to put this, because the recognition was that our region is fast becoming a place where there's a lot of submarines, waters are shallow. Our region is also a place where a lot of shipping comes through, and if you ask any submariner, they will be very concerned with very large container vessels, VLCCs we call them, especially when, if you ask my own submariners, the waters in the South China Sea where we use, the lower parts are very shallow. So all we wanted to do was to make sure that when we explained underwater queues and all that, people again got suspicious, worried about what it means. But all we said was, with IFC and the strength of what it's been able to share in terms of info sharing, we will want to basically put out where these very large vessels are coming through, where they are at this point in time, where submarine rescue assets are in terms of the countries' capabilities in the region, so that at least you can subscribe to the portal, and then you can have a picture for your own use. So that's the idea, just in just the idea that we put out. And when we explain it this way, the reception has been positive, because nowhere are we asking you to tell us where your submarines are, but you can at least know that this is information useful to prevent any accidents at sea for your submarines.
Well, in terms of this question for duplication, sometimes I was thinking about one question. In Singapore, we have two institutions, RICAP and Information Fusion Center. I tried to understand what is the difference. I tried very hard, but I still believe there is a kind of overlapping area. But given that Singapore is such a country of high efficiency, I believe whatever they do, there must be a good reason behind it. So such kind of duplication might not be because of bureaucracy. So this is what I said to myself. So, but duplication is not only found in Asia, in fact, in Gulf of Guinea, for example. When I was having a meeting with some people from African countries a few years ago in Beijing, I realized, actually, in Gulf of Guinea, there are quite a few institutions monitoring the situation at sea. The only question is, the efficiency is very low, and they badly need assistance in terms of equipment or even in terms of human resources support. They ask China and the United States to send a representative there, to work there as duty officers. This is what I can remember. In terms of the applicability of queues toward coastguard and civilian ships, my answer is no, because this certainly is an agreement reached in Qingdao by twenty-one navies in 2014, because although it is not compulsory, but is clearly stated that this is only applicable to the navies. I believe if we want to have these rules adopted to other organization or other ships or so on and so forth, then it has to be renegotiated. So under current situation, this is not possible. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just address two aspects. I think on the information proliferation, it's probably, I agree with Admiral, it's probably a good thing at the moment, and there'll be a sort of evolving maturity to it over time as the success or the efficiency of those various organizations take place. So it's a good thing for that to happen. I think naturally, they will either harmonize or they will adapt and evolve as how effective they are being to address the problems. So at the moment, obviously not a bad thing. On the second point, I think on the coastguard is a good one, because I think it brings out a point about taking a sort of comprehensive approach to the problems. So there are various organizations and various types of capabilities we have that are most suited to some of the problems we face. So we found in the counter piracy and the Gulf of Aden, that actually different nations could bring different capabilities. So the coastguards tend to be very good on the legal aspects of maritime operations. So I think in various places, the coastguard will probably be the most effective way to do maritime security and to police waters or to do things. So I think it's finding the right tool for the problem that you've got, and I think coastguards are a good one. I think in times when navies have filled that gap, it's because there hasn't been the coastguard capacity to do that.
I wish to share something. The center to monitor information sharing is very needed. It can also help the coastal nation, and as you know, Vietnam is a country where we have a long coastal area, and when natural disaster happen, Vietnam suffer a lot. And also, non-traditional threat is also one of the concerns of ours. With our current capability, and we think that we would like to have more information center so that we can share with us the information in a timely manner, helping us raising the awareness at the maritime, and also helping the authorities and related forces of ours, and also have a close cooperation with other authority and forces of other country operated sea, and we can find ways to share the information among the center. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I saw that one of my mentors on maritime security, Jim Boudillier, who's sitting opposite me, may have pressed inadvertently, possibly, but if not, then I want to turn to Jim to ask him to lead on this. And then I think there were one or two other questions from my left, but first, Jim.
Thank you so much, Raul. Yes, I did indeed mean to contribute to the discussion. A couple of issues, if I may. You kindly referred to artificial islands, and I think of Churchill's comment with respect to terminological inexactitude, that it's particularly important that we discipline ourselves in terms of the description of the features in the South China Sea, because of course, as you and all of us around the table are aware, the description is larded with legal overtones. So I find it more useful in many cases to simply refer to artificial features rather than islands. Let me come back to the rather disappointing experience with respect to the code of conduct. We had a declaration of conduct in 2002. Article five of that declaration specifically enjoined the signatories not to amend the status quo. No sooner was that signed than the status quo was amended, and we can see the result, the fundamental alteration in the overall balance in the South China Sea, not only in a political naval sense, but also clearly in a geographic and environmental sense. So here we are, seventeen years later. We're still following this cat's paw of the code of conduct. I personally find it increasingly difficult to believe that the players are sincere in attempting to consummate their discussions with respect to that code, vital as it is. I appreciate particularly the interventions by Senior Colonel Zhao. The People's Republic of China is deeply fortunate to have such an articulate and informed individual, a Renaissance man, an Air Force officer who has mastered maritime issues. But I would raise one or two issues with respect to what he said, and I think that we, while what he said about the queues and the Western Pacific Naval Symposium meeting in Qingdao some years ago is absolutely accurate, I think frankly that we have lost our way, that we need to be far more daring, far more innovative. The WPNS doesn't rule on the coastguard, so it's not the right agency, as I understand it, to make that sort of breakthrough. But the paramilitary use... But the paramilitary use of Coast Guard vessels and fishing vessels in the South China Sea suggests to me that we have to be far more innovative. We have a host of documented occasions where vessels from those categories in fact came perilously close to endangering international navigation. That is simply unacceptable in this day and age. We must be much more imaginative in terms of the way forward. And lastly, I think that I'm a little distressed by his articulate assertion that one side should not impose its interpretation on the other. This is in fact precisely what's happening in the South China Sea. And an interpretation is not a luxury that we can enjoy. The law is the law. And if you would like to interpret it somewhat differently, well, that's very well and good. But the fact of the matter remains that the law prevails. And the countries involved are signatories of UNCLAS and they must respect UNCLAS accordingly. And that of course applies with the ruling of the PCA in 2016. To have simply ignored that ruling is perilously close to being egregious. So I think that in point of fact, we could stand that comment on its head in terms of the interaction which is taking place in the South China Sea. I'd be interested in canvassing the speakers as to how they feel the code of conduct is going to unfold and when we can expect it to be concluded. Thank you very much, Raul.
Thank you, Jim. I think, you know, at this stage, I want to just come back to the panel because I think there were some direct questions that you posed, Jim, and it'll be good to have some responses. So let me turn to Senior Colonel Zhao to respond to you on the specific issues that you raised and then to the panel in terms of the code of conduct. And then we come back to the others.
Mr. Butte, thank you for your comments and your questions. In terms of the need for Coast Guard to be incorporated in queues, as I said, I don't necessarily agree with you. I should have explained that there are other channels for Coast Guards to talk to each other. For example, Chinese Coast Guard and American Coast Guard have actually a mature mechanism and they do talk to each other on a regular basis. So it's not because we have some new situation, therefore we must make a existing mechanism to accommodate a new situation. Because for new situation, we should have a new regulation. This is my answer to your question. The second point is about whether one side, as I said, one side should not force the other in to accept his own interpretation. This is very much the case when we come to the interpretation of UN Convention of Law of Sea. Because you see, internationally, you would just hear so many effortless mentioning of freedom of navigation. And what does it mean to different countries? Let me give you an example. In China's law on the exclusive economic zone and continental shelf, we didn't say much about military activities. We didn't mention military activities in exclusive economic zone. But India does talk about freedom of navigation, sometimes almost in a tone of American. But if you look at India's national law, India would prohibit any military activities in the exclusive economic zone of India, so long as it involves ammunition and explosive. We don't even have such kind of rules. And I can give you another example. A few years ago, when 18 countries were about to conduct a military exercise in the exclusive economic zone of Malaysia, Malaysia finally withdraw from the exercise in that it is a violation of Malaysian national law. So when we talk about UNCLAS, we must realize this is a product of compromises of nine years. It is full of ambiguities for each party to justify their own positions. Let's come to Article 58. So it talks about freedom of navigation and overflight, but it didn't specify whether it includes military aircraft or not. Americans would say, since it didn't mention, so it includes. But China would say, since it didn't mention, why would it include? And I look at the same paragraph and it also asks for due regard to the rights and the interests of the territorial states. And in UNCLAS, we also talk about for peaceful purposes. So if you conduct such a high intensity and frequently closing reconnaissance, is it due regard? So that is, but because frankly speaking, the narrative in the world is still much stronger with the Western countries. So they just create a coin and then just try to tarnish your reputation. They call it a rule of law, rule based order. So what is, first of all, what are these rules? And who are violating all these rules? And who look more than anybody like a real business country in the world right now? This is my answer to your question.
Do you want to speak on the code of conduct? And then we can go to the panel.
Yes. For code of conduct, I believe it's necessary in that probably because of a deficiency in DOC, we need to negotiate a code of conduct. Otherwise, why should we have code of conduct anyway? So this is a natural step forward from DOC. And I believe China and ASEAN countries are really progressing well. This is manifested in the confidence of my Chinese premier, who said in Singapore last year, in November, that he's confident that this COC could be finished within three years. So because I'm working the military and we in the military are not involved in this process, but this is my sincere hope that this can be finished within three years.
Thank you. Let me go to the panel on the specific issue of the code of conduct and ask Admiral. Go.
Well, I'll just say that last year, we saw that ASEAN and China agreed on a single draft negotiating text. And that's a great hurdle that was crossed. Our view is always simple. Singapore is not a claimant state. We do value, as you know, our situation, the freedom of navigation and overflight for trade to pass through, for shipping to pass through. So three years, some people might think it's too long, but for us to reach this stage, I think there's confidence that we can conclude it. But I agree, it's something that the diplomats are continuing to work hard on.
I think that the differences in interpretation, it will be creating friction and very difficult to resolve. And I think that all country had to sit down to discuss, but in the spirit of respect each other and in finding ways to work forward so that we can be able to resolve the issue. Now, the problem regarding the COC, I think that we believe that the cooperation between country, especially between China and other ASEAN countries, it's a way consider new development. And China can also realize that. The stability of the region, of the ECO such as, and also for the growth of the condition for China and all other country around the world to develop will be needed. And I think the problem that set out in the COC will be more pragmatic, practical. And also, there will be content that all both ASEAN countries, ASEAN China, to work together. And this is the way we should move forward for the future development. Thank you very much.
As long as it aligns with UNCLAS and doesn't introduce misalignment even at which the core principles of which I think we're clear on.
Well, I just want to have one word about artificial islands. Again, I want to say, how could we possibly call them artificial islands? Because China certainly have names for these rocks and islands long time ago. We didn't give these islands names in the last couple of years. So if they are artificial islands, where do the names come from? You told me this. Could you, anybody tell me why? We can't have these names long time ago, why you would call this artificial islands? They're not out of blue. There are land reclamation upon the existing rocks and islands that Chinese have named long, long time ago.
I think we've named a lot of rocks around the world in the past. It doesn't mean that they necessarily can sustain life or can be considered to be an island, but.
And let's move on. Yes, I think on the left hand side, yes, if you could identify first and then we'll take the next two questions.
Thank you. Great polling with CSIS. I'd like to return to the question of militia vessels because we've talked a lot about Navy, we've talked a lot about Coast Guard. But as was pointed out, the largest number of dangerous incidents that we've seen of late has tended to involve militia vessels. China statutorily requires vessels to join the People's Armed Forces Maritime Militia. Over the last six months, there have been large numbers operating around Philippine held features at D2 and Loaeta Islands. We just saw reports this week of reckless activity around an Australian vessel, while the Chinese Navy was behaving perfectly professionally. So how is it that we can rein in the activities of an un-uniformed unofficial, you know, paramilitary force that isn't following COL regs and is most likely to actually lead to conflict in the South China Sea? Not navies or Coast Guards, who are for the most part professional.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Wang Dong from Peking University, China. My question goes to Admiral Fraser. First, I would like to, of course, congratulations to your appointment to this very important position. I had a visit, I visited UK actually back in April, so I passed by your building, Defense Ministry. So it was very nice to have this opportunity to exchange views with you here. I'm not sure if you have already, you know, had a chance to, had a review of your China policy or not, but I'd like to take this opportunity to ask you maybe two questions. First, how would you characterize the current state of defense relationship between China and UK? And second, when it comes to your engagement with your Chinese counterpart, how you think you are going to build confidence, which you noted in your remarks, and trust with your Chinese counterpart so as to reduce or avoid miscalculations and enhance better chances of cooperation? And also specifically, what in your view will be the kind of programs, kind of activities, kind of mechanism you, you know, kind of envision that you can do together with your Chinese counterparts? Or in other words, in light of the global Britain vision you have, how you think you can take the defense relationship between UK and China to a new level? Frankly, I think, you know, some innovative strategic thinking that can transcend our logical prejudice and avoid misunderstanding is very much needed. So therefore, I very much appreciate this opportunity to hear your variable comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I just like to put a caveat that the session is on maritime security in that sense. Sure.
To maritime security.
Yes. Bonnie and then the gentleman there.
Thank you, Chair. Bonnie Glazer from, also from CSIS. I think I'd just like to make an observation on something that Senior Colonel Zhou Bo said and maybe also ask Admiral Fraser to chime in on this issue. Colonel Zhou, your frame in your introductory remarks when you talked about freedom of navigation really focused on the United States and China, as if this is just between our two countries and that other countries don't have strong interests. And I think it's quite clear from the remarks by so many of our speakers throughout the day, in our first day of the Chiang Mai dialogue. And if you look at the activities by so many navies in the South China Sea, that a lot of countries have an interest in ensuring freedom of navigation. It seems to me that it's time to recognize that China's efforts to prevent what it calls the internationalization of the South China Sea have failed, that this is an issue that many, many countries around the world care a great deal about. And the language that you've included in your, that you proposed in the Code of Conduct single draft similarly aimed at expelling the United States from this region, preventing countries from conducting military exercises or foreign companies from drilling for oil or other energy in the South China Sea. I just think that this is, it is not something that most countries, navies, militaries around the world really want to see. So this is something that I really hope China will reconsider. The South China Sea doesn't belong to China and China's efforts, I think, to gain greater control over the airspace and sea space of the South China Sea are not likely to succeed.
Thank you. Let me, yes, the gentleman there and then we come back to the panel.
First, I would like to talk about notion of artificial island. The notion of artificial island has clearly defined in the UN Convention on the Law of the Sea. I would like to say that Chinese island in South China Sea has nothing to do with these notions defined in the convention. Second, I would like to put the issues concerning the maritime security with the conflict situations in the South China Sea. We all know that there have some territorial issues and maritime jurisdiction issues in the South China Sea. I think the countries in the region, the relevant countries in the region, with our joint effort, we make that the situation does not affect the navigation, freedom of navigation and the navigation situations in the South China Sea. We keep the stability and the peace in the region that is a contribution to the navigation, navigation, freedom of navigation in the South China Sea. I think the freedom of navigation in the South China Sea enjoyed by all the countries has been, is a public goods provided not by other countries outside the region, but mainly by the countries in the region. It's the joint effort of the countries in the region. And the second, and another issues concerning the application of queues to the Coast Guard, I don't think this is the danger of maritime security. Maybe how to properly deal with the conflicting jurisdictional claims is the issue. The country should not, should not, the country should not impose its claim to other countries by maritime actions.
Thank you. I want to turn to the panel now, but I'd request the panel to be fairly brief in their responses.
So I would like to ask.
Yes, no, the question, that's, I just want to, we've got four people here, am I right, who want to ask questions? I'd like the panel to be fairly brief in their responses because I want to ensure that anyone who wants to ask a question will be able to. who wants to ask a question will be able to do so. Who wants to start?
So just a couple of questions there. I think on particularly on the I'll start with the sort of maritime China policy and how you asked about the characterization of the relationship. I mean, I think it has opportunity. I think we already have a number of engagements and areas of where we were talking about various things. Our fleet commander was recently at the 17th anniversary of Pila Navy and had discussions there. And I think we've got to keep those dialogues open. We had a good session just before this session with the Chinese delegation to to keep open that dialogue. But of course, there are differences in call it interpretation or our understanding. We are really clear that the UK has a right to a presence in the in South China Seas. We reemphasizing the points I made right at the start about the global commons, international and interlinked trade. And therefore, we should be there. We've also got a clear understanding of UN clause and in terms of how that applies to the islands. And therefore, we we reserve the right to enforce our understanding of that through the actions that we that we that we take. And therefore, I'm really clear on that. So I think that is an area of contention. I think it's one we've got to work through. And as I said in the opening remarks, we have to get into some of the detail to expose some of these issues for what they are and address them and and come to come to where we can we can work close together. The mechanisms, I think, we've just got to work through. And I'm a big believer in the dialogue in terms of avoiding miscalculation. Because as the tension can sometimes ratchet up in the rhetoric, it's really important that the military aspects in particular, there's there's opportunities to make sure that that is not made worse by a miscalculation or misunderstanding. I think I've covered. I'll stop there and then I'll come back if this.
Yes, since Rafa has asked me to be brief, so I would just pick up the comments rather than questions from Bonnie. Well, I don't think you have understood me correctly since you misinterpreted my remarks being only in China, US. No, I also mentioned India and Malaysia's position in the maritime issue. So indeed, this should not be an issue between China and US. But right now, what we have seen is the United States have come to the front on an issue which it claims has no position and it won't take sides. Ever since 2015, the United States have conducted 18 times so-called the FANOP operation. And this year alone, until now, it has conducted four times. So my question is, are all the countries involved happy with this? I don't think so. They are worried. And as Prime Minister Li Xinlong said last night, they now probably they are forced to take sides. They should not be forced to take sides. And who is forcing them? China is not forcing any of these countries. But instead, we have seen United States for calling for other countries to join the so-called freedom of navigations. Right? Thank you.
Thank you. Let me now turn to this side of the room and first to a dear friend, Frederick Gare, who's an expert on maritime security, Indian Ocean. Now Frederick and then I'll go along there.
Before that, I do have a comment. I just want to say that I fully concur with what Dr. Petelia says. Simply because it's not because some countries do have interpretations similar to you or that the law is not the law. And ultimately, the law is the law and what you're doing actually in the South China Sea is imposing your interpretation upon others. Similarly, I'm surprised, but you lost common because you started to say, well, quoting Prime Minister Lee saying, well, we shouldn't be forced to choose. He actually mentioned China as putting pressure as well on it right after the Chinese question. But my question is different. I mean, since this morning, we've been talking of the Indo-Pacific. But we seem to have a lot of difficulty placing the Indian Ocean into the Indo-Pacific. So when it comes to the question of MDA, are you really considering that there are too many institutions there and that the whole field is covered and there is no need for it? My that's something which is extremely surprising to me because every time I go to one of the small islands of the area, I hear the same comment. We need more because we are facing trafficking, drug of immigration and all the rest of it and so on and so forth. So you seem to suspect, of course, this is all about China and anti-Chinese and so on and so forth. The reality is that there is a need which is hardly covered there. And China, sorry, the Indian Ocean is emerging as the next big geostrategic area when there is actually a big hole in terms of security architecture. MDA is a very basis of it. So are you really opposing it? And what makes you so uneasy about having additional institution within this area in terms of NDAs?
Thank you, the lady there. Yes.
Thank you. Oriana Skyler Mastrom, a professor at Georgetown University. I focus on China military and security issues. I have a question for Colonel Joe and then for the panel. I am currently doing research on Chinese intentions in the South China Sea. And I've looked at Chinese behavior, discourse, capabilities and interests. And it seems to me that China would like to restrict, if they could, US military operations in the first island chain. I don't think that this is controversial. But there's a lot of uncertainty about what China wants. So could you describe for me China's position on US presence, military presence and military operations within the first island chain? Is there room enough for both of us in that I think what the United States wants is equal military power for both within the first island chain? So could you describe if China, and I don't want to push you into a hypothetical, but I'm curious. If China could decide tomorrow what the United States military could and could not do there, what would be different than today? And for the panel, Colonel Joe did mention that states are worried. The United States has escalated its operations and I'm very supportive of that. And I actually think the United States should do more, but states are worried. So for the other panelists in particular, it seems to me that countries in the region want the United States to push China to follow international law, but they don't want the United States to provoke China. It might be my lack of imagination, but I don't know how to do this. So do you have any suggestions for US policy about how to take a firm stance without unnecessarily causing conflict in the region? Thank you.
Thank you for that. I'm sure the panel will respond. Yes, the gentleman there. Yes.
Thank you. I know that our senior, my Chinese colleague, Senior Colonel Joe, has been bombarded and quite busy this afternoon. But I have a question to you and maybe you can help me to elaborate about my one of my question. I like your idea that the Washington, Beijing should cooperate rather than confront on those freedom of navigation for the sea life communication, et cetera. And despite of the differences or different interpretation of the freedom of navigation. So from your personal view, what do you expect that Washington should do so that those different interpretation obstacles could be removed for a real cooperation between two sides on those freedom of navigation?
Thank you for that clear question. I want to come back to the panel. We have a few more minutes and then I have three other people on my list and we'll end the session. But since there have been so many questions to you, Colonel Joe, would you like to start?
Right. On the Indian Ocean issue, of course, is very important for China because of the energy import and so on and so forth. And we have now a logic supply station in Djibouti, which is demonstrated by itself the importance that we are dashed to Indian Ocean. But as far as this Indo-Pacific concept of strategy is concerned, first of all, I don't know really how to call it, whether it's a strategy, American called a strategy. But if it is a strategy, then it has to have a very visible and tangible components. Yeah. Is it an economic proposal or is it a security proposal? If it is economic proposal, where does the money come from? And where are you going to invest the money? These are unavoidable questions. And if it is more for security, then what is the real threat or the real target? Rumor has it that the court actually is at least because of China, if it is not against China. But I can say in one sentence, none of these four countries would sacrifice its natural relationship with China for the sake of any of these three other countries. So I believe it's it's not the I think Prime Minister Lee also mentioned or hinted in that regard that this this concept probably still need some has rooms for improvement because we are not so 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 clear about what it is. But what anyway, our attitude is whatever proposal it is, it has to be transparent. It has to be inclusive. And the Prime Minister Modi also mentioned it clearly last year. Yeah, to to just to iron out any suspicions of being of this being an anti-China club. In terms of China's attitude toward Americans in the first chain of island, I would just argue that well, because it's close to China and because Chinese military is growing and because China would have to go beyond the first chain of island to do two things. Number one, to protect China's ever-growing national interest, overseas interest. Number two, to shoulder its increasing international responsibility. We must go beyond the first chain of island. But it seems that some country just want to confine China within the first chain of island. This is impossible. This would invite conflict. Thank you.
Does anyone in the panel want to respond to the question of what US policy should be? No. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, the last three people on my list and then we have to end the session. Let me turn to my colleague, Antoine Leveque. Yes.
Thank you, Rahul. My question is for Colonel Joe specifically. You argued in your Financial Times piece a couple of days ago that the counter piracy effort since 2008 in the Gulf of Aden had been a great success. You also referred to Shade as an institution which is worthy of attention for its cooperative potential. It seems to me that the success of this entire of operations in that theater is largely owed to an understanding between navies that they would not be targeting each other. They would just be targeting non-state actors, pirates in this case. I could see a future a few years down the line where that sort of understanding could break down owing to more global, more general pressure, competitive pressure between the US and China in this case. So I wonder whether you feel that that may be the case, that there could be a breakdown. And if so, isn't it time now to think about preventative measures and possibly institutions beyond restraint in unilateral behavior? Thank you.
Thank you, the gentleman there. Yes, please.
Okay, thank you, Chair, for giving me last chance to raise question. Wu Zichun from China National Institute for Satchin Studies. My question is about the PHNOPS. As we know, PHNOPS, Freedom Navigation Operations, conducted by United States in the South China Sea region is a major factor that drive the South China Sea situation going with, you know, ups and downs. So my question is maybe for Senior Colonel Zhou Bo and Admiral Ko. Does China have any counter measures to stop the United States to take further actions in the South China Sea? If we look at this, you know, fact that the United States take last two years, for instance, in 2017, United States has conducted a PHNOPS in South China Sea region four times. Last year, five times. This year, till now, four times. So does China have any counter measures to stop the United States to take further actions? It seems that the United States will conduct the PHNOPS in South China Sea more frequently, more provocatively, more broadly. And also, what would be ASEAN's, you know, official stance towards this PHNOPS in the South China Sea region? Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, to my colleague, Viraj Solanki.
Thank you. Viraj Solanki from the double I double S. My question is for Vice Chief Fraser from the UK. The United Nations voted last week on the sovereignty of the British Indian Ocean Territory in the Chagos Archipelago, which is claimed by both Mauritius and the UK. And the vote was heavily in favor of Mauritius, although the outcome is non-binding. And the UK has stated that it's made a long-term commitment since 1965 to cede the sovereignty of the sovereignty of the territory to Mauritius when it is no longer required for defense purposes. However, does not adhering to the result of this overwhelming vote in the UK diminish in any way the UK's own commitment to adhering to a rules-based order in the Indo-Pacific? Thank you.
Thank you. We have four minutes left before the session ends. I want to end on time. I want to therefore ask the panelists to respond to any other questions they've heard in a minute or less. And we'll start with in the order that we started. So I'd like to go to the general first and then move across.
I would like to share my point of view. If you want to visit the presence of the US and the point of view ASEAN to such a present from our point of view. Our country have a large coastal area at the East Sea with much more military activity in the East Sea. Increase more equipment as our transportation present here. If we don't have a good way to harmonize it, then we won't, we afraid that there might be a collision, certain collision or friction happens. And if such thing happen, then a country like us that is directly next to the East Sea or you call it South China Sea. Therefore, from our point of view, that major power should in a way compromise to lower your military activity when there is not a need for that to avoiding collisions and friction. Thank you very much.
Well, I just say that it's we've talked about international law and all that. I just remember that UN clause is a negotiated outcome. It's an outcome to balance interests of coastal states and user states for the seas. On the one hand, we don't want countries to cherry pick laws to abide by. We don't want countries to be too restrictive in their interpretation. On the other hand, we also have this interesting problem domestically for the US that they haven't ratified it. So I have no easy answers. Oriana asked it, but it's something that we hope that every year we don't have a repeat of the same conversations and the same questions and answers. So yeah.
I would use the last chance to answer Antoine's question because I do want to have the last closing remarks of mine be on some positive tone. I said that positively at the end of my opinion in Financial Times. And I also said that said about that positively, my remarks made just now. That is how China and US should cooperate with each other in maritime domain. Because in all these kind of forum, you do have this kind of tit for tat conversation about the integration of UN clause, so on and so forth, and my China-US relations, so on and so forth. But think about this. China and the US do not want a conflict. And China and the US both agree to freedom of navigation. But if you want the other side to cooperate with you at its own security cost, it's difficult. But if we look beyond our own doorsteps, the international, the whole planet is covered with water, about 70%. So China and the US definitely could cooperate elsewhere. Think about Chinese Navy in the future, in 10 years, in 20 years' time. Definitely is one of the best navy in the world. Probably some country already consider China as one of the best navy in the world. So why can't the two strongest navy cooperate with each other to make the international sea lane safer, to provide more public security goods to maritime domain? So this is what I called for in my remarks and as my closing remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Admiral Dean Fraser. No, you have 30 seconds.
I think you captured the question in terms of it was an advisory judgment. I think that we, the UK has stated its position about the handling of that and in the UN. But I don't think it diminishes our our position at all. We've got a very strong record of I don't think it diminishes our, our position at all. We've got a very strong record of rules-based system. And frankly, the British Indian Overseas Territories represents a key capability in the security for the region.
Well, thank you very much. We have to end our session. I think we had some very interesting perspectives brought out, not all in agreement, but that was never expected. But I think it is important, as all the panelists have argued, that it's important to be able to cooperate on, on different aspects. I'd like you all to join me in thanking the panelists. And, and also thank all of you for taking part in the discussion. Thank you very much.